Welcome. This is the September 19, 2022, meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'd like to start the meeting by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight's decision will be published in the Record Journal on Friday, September 23, 2022. The effective date of your variance will be Friday, September 23, 2022. The date a certified copy is recorded on the land records. The statutory 15-day appeal period will expire on Sunday, October 9, 2022. If you commence operation and/or construction during the appeal period, you do so at your own risk. If anybody's here for variance request 22-034 for 790, also known as 800 North Colony Road, it has been withdrawn. Voting tonight: Bruce Conroy, Tom Wolfher, Karen Harris as Acting Secretary, Ray Rice, Vice Chair, and Joe Rusick as Chair. First variance request is 22-029, variance request for Choate Rosemary Hall for 33 Christian Street, also known as 59 North Elm. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman. Staff comments read as follows. Applicant seeks front yard of 13 feet where 40 feet is required to construct a new admissions building with associated underground parking at 333 Christian Street, corner of North Elm Street, in an R-18 district. This application pertains only to front yard setbacks as applicant will need to proceed to Planning and Zoning Commission for special permit approval for all other required site elements of new development. Educational institution tax-exempt status should not impact any determination the ZBA should render. The section of the parcel identified for proposed new building is the southeast corner of intersection of Christian Street and North Elm Street. The request for front yard of 13 feet is minimum point of front yard as pertains to frontage on North Elm Street. The second proposed front yard variance request references minimum point of 37.8 feet front yard as pertains to frontage on Christian Street. North Elm Street at Christian Street has unusual and skewed boundary and widening the town right-of-way along North Elm Street well beyond a town road's typical dimensions. In actuality, the front yard on Elm Street measures 43.2 feet to curb and 25 feet to standard measurement of town road width and front boundary if not skewed. The board should evaluate this in applicant's presentation to determine the presence of hardship in order to grant approval with regard to North Elm Street front yard. Applicant need only adjust the proposed building 2.1 feet to the south to achieve compliance with the Christian Street front yard. Therefore, this office cannot support the Christian Street front yard setback request as compliant alternative exists and easily is met.
We also have some correspondence from the Town Planner. There's a letter from Philip Uecker from 29 Curtis, and also from the Town Engineer, and just another from the Town Planner. I don't think I missed anything.
Yes, you did, Mr. Chairman. There's another one from Dennis Sennaviva dated the 18th of July.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Not bad. Yourself?
Good, thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, for your record, my name is Dennis Sennaviva. I'm an attorney with the Sennaviva Law Firm, 721 Broad Street in Meriden. To my left is Patrick Durbin, the Chief Financial Officer at Choate Rosemary Hall, and to his left is George DeBregard, who is an architect with Robert Stern Architects. In the audience, we have other members of the team, Brian Kay, who is our Site Engineer from SLR, in case there's any questions, but that would be more site plan issues, perhaps. I want to begin by thanking you for continuing this matter from July. As you know, we have filed an amended application, and it's noted in your staff comments, the building as proposed is now 13 feet back from the property line, and we'll talk about the distance from the street curb line in a minute. But we made this modified request for a variance of the front yard setback for the construction of a new admissions building in the heart of Choate's campus, and it's here specifically being the southeast corner of the North Elm Street and Christian Street intersection. The parcel is zoned R-18. Such zone identifies the front yard setback requirement as 40 feet. While the proposed location of the admissions building is 13 feet away from the street right-of-way, it is well over 40 feet away from the street curb line or edge of pavement. That's important to understand as we make our presentation of hardship this evening. But before I discuss the legally recognized hardship or hardships that can justify the approval of our appeal this evening, I wanted to provide you with some basic understanding of the planning journey that has brought us to this point. For its value as context, I want all of us to understand the genesis of this request from Choate and the reasons why this specific location for the building has become a critical element in the long-range planning and continued success of Choate while simultaneously being based on important town concerns like maintaining the look of this magnificent campus. And I reference the term magnificent campus, Mr. Chairman, because I did hand out, this is just a printing from the Wallingford website, and it has under points of interest identifies Choate Rosemary Hall, and it begins by indicating this magnificent campus situated along Christian and North Elm Streets, we're talking about tonight as many fine examples of architecture. It talks about the school being founded in 1890 and has produced leaders in government, industry, and the arts. So there's a recognition in your website, this is a magnificent campus, and this is the center of it, and that's, and again, Patrick will discuss the importance of this location. We're also going to point out during the presentation that this location also allows us to build this building with an underground parking lot. I don't know if that sounds like much, but what it does is it allows us to keep a very large piece of land green. It doesn't need the asphalt, there's no retaining walls, nothing that you would typically see with a large parking lot. And actually, with this location, and again, we'll talk about topography during our presentation, it will allow us to take an existing 60-car parking lot, which runs along Gunpowder Creek, and return that to green space to make it environmentally sensitive. So there's a number of benefits that accrue not only to Choate but also to the location by having the advantage of using the area in question for underground parking. So again, that would, again, allow us to decommission or to turn green an existing parking location. So before I go into the hardships, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm going to ask Patrick to discuss the process and goals that brought Choate to this location, and we're aware that, you know, where it is and why we're here. And then George will discuss, give us a look of the nature of the topography and the underground of the building and its underground by going to the easel and taking advantage of some of the nice-looking boards that he's provided for us this evening. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I have to turn it over to Patrick.
Hold the microphone nice and close to you so we can hear you, please.
Thank you, Dennis. Patrick Durbin, for the record, 333 Christian Street.
A little closer so we can hear you. Thank you.
Patrick Durbin, here for Choate Rosemary Hall, 333 Christian Street here in Wallingford. So I just want to give a sense of why we're talking about this specific location. So to best welcome our applicants and their families and to show them the campus, we're planning a purpose-built building centrally located for our admissions function within the core of the campus, equipped with underground parking and meeting spaces. Our current admissions office is located in the old infirmary, and they've simply outgrown the space. As we've done with all of our campus planning, we spent many years considering where to place this purpose-built building, and it was obvious that the admission building should be easy to find, and it should be located in the center of our campus so when prospective families arrive at the corner of Christian and Elm Street, they know where to go. And as it relates to the precise location on this parcel and resulting variance we are seeking this evening, Choate was intentional in selecting a spot on this parcel that would maintain the neighborhood aesthetic of a quaint New England town. Some of our peer schools are in very remote settings, and we're very lucky and proud to be in such a vibrant town as Wallingford. Just as Wallingford touts Choate on its website, Choate touts Wallingford on our own website. And so it is in that line of thought of maintaining the existing neighborhood frontage that we are here tonight. If we were to build the building by conforming to the setback, this building would be the outlier, as nearly every other building on North Elm Street between Center Street and High Street sits closer to the road, and it would make this building be the one that sticks out as non-conforming to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With that, I'm going to have George just bring up some of the boards he has this evening to sort of identify with a picture a little bit easier what our presentation will be relative to hardship.
Sure. Anybody who's up at the easel, we ask you state to the left of it because of our camera situation, so when you're presenting, state to the left. Thank you.
Do I need to speak? Yes. Turn it on, I think. How's that? Thank you. My name is George DeBregard from Robert Stern Architects.
You got to speak a little louder.
George DeBregard from Robert Stern Architects, One Park Avenue in New York City. So this illustration, which I believe is part of the package that you've received, shows the admissions building at the corner of North Elm and Christian Street. You can see that we have illustrated the property line, which has been referenced already in red, along the North Elm Street, and you can see the, in blue, this continuation of the property line that comes from Edsel House and the properties to the south of this parcel or this area, this site on North Elm Street. As Dennis and Patrick mentioned, our siting of this building is very much in careful thought and balance with the nature of the rest of the neighborhood along North Elm Street. The other important data on the side of the illustration is a survey of all of the buildings between Center Street and High Street and their distance from the curb line. You can see that this dark line here shows where the new admissions building proposal sits with regard to all of those other setbacks. So now that I've sort of told you the information that's in front of you, I want to talk a little bit about our planning process. We have a building that, as you can identify from the outlines of the neighboring buildings, attempts to serve this purpose-built admissions role while maintaining the character and fabric of North Elm Street, not just in terms of the setback, but in terms of the scale and relationship between the parts of the building, its landscape, and access around the site. We've mentioned the four-way stop as a very, sort of, the place that you arrive in the middle of the Choate campus and the middle of Wallingford, that this building has an entrance, the primary entrance for visitors who are arriving on foot comes from an entrance that's facing Christian Street but is immediately accessible from the four-way stop. And there is a significant amount of internal circulation pathways that are on Choate's property to move students around the building and into other areas of Choate's program, completely with inside of Choate's property. I'm actually going to move next to a diagram that discusses a little bit something that is harder to see here, which is the relationship of the parking garage that's underneath this and the topography. While the building itself here is relatively the same size as the rest of the buildings in the neighborhood, the parking garage beneath it is larger. And in order to be able to fit this parking garage, as you're seeing here, which is completely landscaped and hidden from neighbors and from pedestrians and drivers in the vicinity, we have to take advantage of certain features of the slope here on the property, and the further that we move that, the more challenging that becomes. This is essentially the same area as the previous illustration, but showing the grade lines of the slope that's falling away. While this area seems like it is relatively sort of flat as you drive by, it's actually because the entire slope is very consistent. You're going down a relatively steep slope from the top of Christian Street, further up in Choate's campus, and then coming down a long slope that's fairly consistent as you come down to the bottom of Christian Street. The area that we're looking at in the site falls almost 17 feet across the area that we're considering, the site for this building. It's about 240 feet from the curb to the bottom of the site. Much of that grade change occurs in about six feet close to North Elm Street and another eight feet down at the eastern edge of the site near the athletic field. We want to preserve, as you've said, the green space on the site, and as we tuck the footprint of the parking garage underneath that, keeping the garage itself underneath that grade change is a significant challenge that we've met by moving the building to the location we have off of North Elm Street. The final graphic that I'd like to show here is an illustration of the building as a photo-montage on a photograph looking south on North Elm Street. So here we're looking down North Elm Street, Christian Street is crossing here right to left. This is the new admissions building. And just wanted to call out some of the same dimensions that you've seen on the plan diagram, but here in this three-dimensional view. So you see that our curb setback is 43 feet from the curb, 43.2 feet. That is just a little bit more than the building that is adjacent to it, to the south, which is 42.6 feet. And here, sort of beyond all these numbers that we've been talking about in these setbacks, you can see what the character that Patrick referred to in his statements means, that the street wall of these buildings, as you're looking down North Elm Street, is very consistent. This is the character of the town, of the New England village that this part of North Elm Street evokes. The building itself is scaled in a method that is, we think, appropriate to continuing that fabric. And you also see that, again, reproducing some of the dimensions that are in the plan, that a number of neighboring buildings at this intersection are, in fact, closer, that this is not an area where a larger setback would remain consistent with the fabric of Would you like to ask questions about any of these?
I have, in that illustration there, that is with the new building at 13 feet?
Yes, it is.
Does anybody have any questions about this illustration? Because I think I'm going to want them to go back to the beginning, so I just wanted to know before I had them. Anybody, you got any questions about this illustration before we go back?
Yeah, as staff pointed out, in reference to North Elm Street, it says that in order for us to, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong street. Go ahead.
Can you go back to the first? In that, in that drawing, approximately, where does the part that we don't see that's underground of the parking garage end?
Down the slope, it ends approximately just above this pathway that you see crossing from Christian down south into the joint other path. In the other direction, it is about where this tree is.
Karen, do you have a question?
Yes, I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Where, can you point to where the entrance would be that a car would enter to park that?
Yes, this is it.
Okay. I have two other questions. How many cars will the parking garage accommodate?
Karen, you got to speak into the microphone now, Karen, yeah?
How many cars will the parking garage accommodate?
Approximately 75.
75. So do you expect that of those 75, most of those are going to be visitors to campus? Or might some of those cars be cars that employees would drive and now would be parked underground, whereas previously they would be parking somewhere above ground elsewhere on campus or around city streets?
I'm going to, I think I just heard from my client that it'd be a combination of both. You know, the admissions building actually isn't, isn't that, isn't used all year long in terms of admissions, it's during the admissions cycle where it's primarily busier. But it would still be used by some staff members, and that's why they're able to remove the 60-car parking lot further east and to return it to green state.
Thank you.
Ray Rice, you got a question?
The parking. If the parking wasn't there, could the building be placed within the limits without having to go through all this?
Yes, I could imagine it could be, but the parking is part of the building program.
I understand that, but I also, I'm just looking at the variances. The variances wouldn't be needed if you didn't have the parking, and obviously you have the parking now, don't you?
The current parking lot for the admissions building across the street is much smaller than the parking structure that we're proposing here. The parking lot that Patrick was referencing, which is further down the hill here, is, I think, used for a mixture of parking throughout the campus.
That's where they'd be parking now, along that roadway, right? The roadway that goes in?
Yeah.
And across the street in the other parking lot?
Yes.
If I might, just to add on to that response, if the building is built, parking will be part of that, only because they want to have parking, more typically, you would have parking for visitors around the admissions building. You really don't want them necessarily driving all over campus when they don't know the campus, especially during the school year, so that the parking facility will either be underground, or if this variance gets denied, that's why we're telling you, it'll be above ground. It'll be one or the other. There is a need for additional parking with this additional building.
So what has changed? What are they doing now?
It's just the number of, it's the number of applicants, the number of applicants, you know, drive some of this. It's also the fact that they've outgrown an old infirmary that's used as admissions now. So instead of cobbling together an older building, they're just, they're looking to place up an attractive building right in the center of their campus that is compatible with all the other buildings in that site.
And there's no place else to put this?
There are other places that don't serve the purpose, and that's why I was trying to have Patrick give the context. It's not as if we are ignoring your regulations. We're here because we recognize that we need your assistance, but the location that fits best, this is after years of looking at what alternatives exist, you know, where's the best location? They have, they have many acres. I mean, you're right, they could put it anywhere, put it in the middle of a football field, but it makes more sense to be in the center of campus. And again, the center of campus is Christian and North Elm Streets. It would be consistent with some of the other buildings that are already there. And so when they looked at, from a strategic perspective over the last couple of years, this location seemed to make the most sense. It works best for Choate moving forward, and it really becomes sort of an identity building, a very important building for their overall development, and that seems...
But you know what we're looking for.
Hardship, which I'm going to get to in a minute.
Exactly.
That's what I'm going to be doing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, sorry, Bob. Go ahead.
I just had a question on the parking also.
Hold the microphone up close to you.
Sorry. So on the parking, you said that the slope that you have is challenging, but that doesn't mean you can't use it. It just might cost more money.
No, it's, the challenge is actually to keep the parking concealed below ground. And we think that the maintenance of this green space as a field and also maintaining the athletic field to the south, which is another sort of component of this precinct, is a valuable asset to the campus and the town, and to avoid having the retaining walls, the large structure that is a prefabricated parking structure visible is the challenge here, is to keep this all below grade.
But you said the grade was such a slope that it would be tough to build underground there.
No, I'm saying that if we go further south, we run out of ground to be underneath.
So at some point, if you were to move the building back and you still had underground parking and you went to the max that you can go, how many parking spaces would you have
The difficulty in answering that question is that the circulation of the parking requires a certain amount of distance, and so you would end up with a parking, you could reduce the size of the parking garage, but at a significant loss to the efficiency and constructibility of the parking garage, because you will not, you'll have almost all circulation and no parking spaces.
So you're saying you can't bring in enough fill to level it off to build your parking garage the way you want it?
Well, if we brought in more fill, we would be filling in the athletic field to the south, or, sorry, to the, page down to the east.
Hello. Am I on? No. All right. So what, how much are you going to change the grade from where it is right now to do that building right there?
That we would come, that we'd follow the natural grade for the 43 feet between the curb and the face of the building, and then this portion of green space that's next to the admissions building here would essentially be level, and then we would catch the rest of the grade coming down into the athletic field.
All right. So what's the grade right now, and how much slope are you going to change? Are you, you're going to level it out?
Yeah.
What's the slope right now? So show me where, show us right there, right? So that's where it is, right?
This is where it is, yes.
So where do you level off that slope?
That we level it off...
From 43 feet to?
From 43 feet back to down here.
All right. So how much grade is that? How was the drop right there? What's the slope change? Existing. Goes from what to what?
It goes down 17 feet over this...
So you're going to come back 43 feet, level that out for how long?
For approximately 190 feet.
So the only real reason is you don't want to go back into the athletic field, correct? Not, you're not, not really, it's not really about preserving the slope, because you're not preserving the slope.
And we would, the retaining wall of the parking garage would become exposed along that side.
So it won't be exposed at all?
No, that's the intent, is it won't be exposed.
That's the intent?
Yes, that's what we're trying to do by asking for this.
Anybody else for what's, for any of the drawings or presentation up there? At this point, I think we're okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And, Mr. Chairman, I apologize if we weren't completely clear on site plan issues. We honestly had an envision going over the site plan at this point for the ZBA, but we're happy to, we do have our project engineer here who can address some of the site plan questions. George is, of course, the architect of the building. George is, of course, the architect of the building and did a good job, but we do have Brian Kay with us to talk from SLR to talk about any site plan issues that this board might have.
Okay. I, I, it, it got a little sidetracked there, but it was just questions everybody up here had to understand why you need what you need. I, I believe that's why everybody went where we went.
That's right. And let me, let me go on now to discuss hardship, since that's, that's my role tonight. First and foremost, I wanted to discuss the purpose of requiring a front yard setback. Not a side yard or a rear yard setback, which are designed by law to provide privacy from one, one's neighbor, and that's the reason for a side yard, so you don't have houses that are common walls like you did back perhaps in the twenties and thirties, the nineteen twenties and thirties. So what I handed out, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, was just a, a quick handout from Fuller. Fuller is the premier Connecticut expert on Connecticut land use. He's the author of the ninth volume of the Connecticut Practice Series, which land use attorneys and all attorneys use. And when discussing the location of structures on lots and setback requirements, he indicates that zoning regulations universally contain front setback requirements, as does yours, and they're designed primarily to keep buildings and structures at significant distance from streets for safety reasons. So that's the, that's the genesis, that's the reason for front yard setbacks. He also notes later on in that page that setback variances are probably the great majority of applications to the zoning board of appeals. Interestingly, tonight, for example, of your ten appeals, seven involve a request for a variance or one or two setback requirements. And if you review the appeals filed to the zoning board of appeals in 2022, eighteen appeals out of the total of twenty-eight that have been filed so far this year are appeals requesting a variance from a setback requirement, and two-thirds of those were granted, and that's because you recognize that the distance requirement is simply a target in general, it's a target distance. Specific locations can show how the particular proposal for any application meets the purpose of the front yard setback regulation, and that is primarily for safety purposes. Here, the proposed building is not only located over forty feet away from the actual street line where the cars are traveling, this location is further protected by a line of thirty granite posts that line North Elm Street between the street curb lines, the pedestrian sidewalk, and the proposed building location. So they're all identified on the forms and maps that we provide as part of application, and it's up on the board that George has before you. This provides a unique level of safety at this location. Again, not only does this proposed building sit behind over forty feet of distance from the curb line, it also sits behind thirty granite posts and the municipal pedestrian sidewalk. So it sits back at a significant distance from the travelway. And you know that, of course, in different zones, the, the, the front yard setback is different. There's nothing uniform. It's not a forty-foot setback requirement in all zones. It happens to be in this zone, but it's not something that is important as a distance in all zones, so that, again, it's, it's a target to make sure that there is sufficient distance between the road and the building to make sure that it provides a safe location for people who might be residing in it, working in it, et cetera. One of the components for hardship is that it must be unique to the property. And here, as noted in your staff memorandum, the historical street right-of-way, the street right-of-way, not the street curb line, is actually skewed, it skews easterly just before the proposed location of this building, so that if you look on the submission that you have and the map that's up on, on the easel, it shows the green line, which is a consistent line of the typical Wallingford street line. And that street line, for reasons unknown to my client, that street line skews easterly right before the advent of this proposed admissions building, so that you have a street line which is closer to the proposed building, only because that line skews easterly just in this location. When you go back across the street and further north on North Elm, it stays consistent. I'm not sure why there's this skew, but that's the, that's the unique feature of our particular property. So that creates an unusual hardship, and it reduces the appropriate building area by at least twelve feet with no regard to the function or purpose of the front yard setback requirement. A third recognized hardship arises from topography of the land. And when you look at the grade of the land in this location, as George pointed out, the land runs down as it, as it progresses easterly away from the proposed administration building location. It's the topography at this location that allows us to provide concealed underground parking under the proposed new building. To move it further east would cause such parking to be only partially underground or not at all. Such a scenario would require additional asphalt over planned green space, and we would require a retaining wall along Christian Street to meet the grades for the parking lot and access aisles. Typically, neither is preferred as we try to maintain the look and appeal of this intersection. Lastly, I ask that you look at two additional pieces of information to be gleaned from the site plan that's on the board and related exhibits. The other buildings at this intersection, the Edsel House, Sally Wright Lodge, the Carrington House, and the Homestead, they're all identified. They all sit significantly closer to both the street line and the street, street curb line than this proposal. We're further back than the existing buildings at that intersection. This proposed location will not harm the value of properties in the area, but rather will be compatible with the other buildings in this area, creating the symmetry and maintaining the identity of the beautiful center of the Chote campus to which Patrick referred, so that, again, the location is not one that's, that was chosen, you know, by a dartboard, it was very carefully selected, taking into consideration the other buildings in that area. It is no closer, frankly, further back from the travelway than the other existing buildings. Additionally, as George had pointed out, if you look at the list of the other buildings between, on North Elm, between Center Street and High Street, thirty-five out of the fifty are closer to the street curb line than this proposed administration building. So you've got seventy percent are closer than what we're proposing. One cannot convincingly argue that the proposed location is unsafe, it can't be argued that it's unusual, or that it's incompatible with the neighborhood. And then tangentially, I just wanted to point out that you do have the memo from your town engineer who reviewed this revised appeal. She indicated in her letter, and you have in her memo, that she has no problem with the variance request as long as the driveway remains on Christian Street, which it does. She didn't want any access off of North Main. We don't propose any. This is from an expert who handles traffic considerations for this town. Her opinion is not based on some visceral, unprofessional view of an appeal, but rather based on her significant talents, experience, and desire to protect the town. Again, it's based on access to the site from Christian Street as currently proposed. So, in summary, if you look at the location of this building, if you recognize where it is, not insofar as distance from a street line, because you have a skewed street line, but from the travelway, it is consistent and compatible with all of the buildings in that neighborhood. And again, as pointed out in, in the Wallingford website, this is the magnificent campus along Christian and North Elm Street. This is the most important intersection in their, in their operation, and, and it's a very, very important application. We didn't take it lightly coming here. We think it's important, we think the topography of that location, the fact that we meet all of the, all of the basic premise behind a front yard setback, we meet that. This is not an unsafe location, I don't think anyone can argue that. And is it unique? It's only here that you have the skewed property line. Again, we don't know why, but it, it is so, and that's what, that's what makes the application look more significant than it actually is. It, it actually sits, if that street line was consistent, and usually it's parallel to the travelway, it, you know, we would be back, not thirteen feet, but thirty-eight feet. So it's a, it's a big difference, but that's what, you know, that's what happens, and that's why we're here. So it's a unique application. It's a very important application for Chote and their operation moving forward, and we hope that you, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you. So I have maybe one or two more questions. The football field. You, that was brought up, that, you know, but we approved lights for a new football field. Is this football field gonna stay here?
You're refer, yep, you're referencing the last summer we were here on, for a proposed field.
Old Durham Road, Christian Street.
Yeah, near Old Durham Road, thank you. That did not become feasible to build up there because of the, uh, the programmatic operations are athletics center is on the other side of Christian Street, and getting kids safely to that location would not be feasible crossing every day for the, for football practice. And the facilities required, that were needed, was that, when we came to this board, we were thinking it was just going to be a field. It became very clear we would also need a facility there as well.
So you didn't go in front of planning and zoning for that?
We did not.
Okay. Does anybody else? Ray, oh no, sorry, Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question, and that is a lot of the discussion that you just led referred to the setback that you're requesting on North Elm Street. What about the setback that you're requesting on Christian Street?
We're withdrawing that request. I think your, your staff did a great job in convincing us that the two or two and a half feet, you know, can, the building could be moved southerly without, without need for variance.
Wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else have any questions?
That's our presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Very good one, too. And I, I must say, I mean, Chote always does a good job, but my problem, I'm looking at this, is the parking garage is causing the whole headache here.
Well, I, I mean, to be fair, it's also, that's a factor, no doubt about it, but moving the building back forty feet from this skewed property line just puts it so much further back than the other buildings in that location, it, it will, it just won't be consistent, it's not compatible with that intersection. I think that's part of the issue.
I, I, I get that, but most of those houses on Elm Street probably built in the late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds, so we really can't, I mean, you know, it's not comparable to what, if somebody was to build a new house on any one of those lots today.
I understand. It's just, again, if you want to have a campus that, we, we like to think that it remains magnificent, that that's an important element to it. And again, it, just so, the reason Patrick made his presentation was to make, hopefully allow you to understand that we don't come here thinking that this is a simple application. We knew it was a difficult one, but difficult, we wanted to try to explain to you that we're not here simply because we want it, it's because it, it's something that's been reviewed over a period of a couple of years, strategies put together, and locating it. And I think, of all the arguments, Mr. Chair, I think that which suggests that this, this building, if it's moved back further, you know, besides the fact that you're gonna have to have now a, a, a black parking lot, you know, asphalt parking lot abutting it, which will be less attractive than underground parking, I think, you know, the question is, does an admissions building sitting further back from the road look unusual for that intersection? And that's really the, that's really the question. Patrick, may I ask?
Mr. Chairman, just on that same point, if we, to Dennis's point, even if the parking garage was eliminated and we moved back forty feet from the property line, which is skewed, it would rank forty-ninth out of fifty properties on the list.
I'm sorry?
Between, so, yeah, the bold line up there on the right, there's fifty properties between, roughly, between Center Street and High Street. As if, this diagram shows that as, if, if it was built as it's shown on the drawing, it would, seventy percent of properties would be closer to the road than that one. If we build forty feet back from the property line and did not need a variance, it would ninety-eight percent of the properties in that same mile stretch or so would be closer to the road. So to Dennis's point, I just.
And I get that, and I understand what you're trying to prove, but again, eighty percent of those houses on Elm Street were built in the late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds, before there was a thought of zoning. People just built them. So I mean, that argument, I understand it, and I understand what you guys are trying to do, don't get me wrong. I, I get the, what you're, the concept, you're trying to make it all look uniform. And, and again, Chote does a nice job with all their properties. But using that as a reason, to me, because it's an old house, it was built before zoning, and most of them were close to the road, for, for I don't know what reason, but they were. Maybe it was easier to get materials to the house, you know? So, but, hold on. Bob, go ahead.
To the zoning.
Hold the microphone up.
Sorry, to zoning. Just because they keep referencing other buildings are non-conforming, but reading the regulations, you don't want to keep having non-conforming buildings. The town, we'd rather have it in conformity, the town?
The object in general with any non-conformity, of course, is to try to eliminate the non-conformities. Chote's been there over a hundred years as well, predating zoning. So, we think we're mixing, so we're classifying them all the same, I think you're trying to isolate. That is always the object, to eliminate non-conformities, but when an entire area, zone, street, I think that's the point trying to be made, that you all need to make a determination about whether that is valuable or not, and aiding your determination.
So, but you are saying, though, you can move the building back. How big, can we ask how big the building is going to be?
About, about fourteen thousand square feet.
So it's a decent size. It's bigger than some of the, so it's bigger than most of the houses on that street then, because the houses aren't anywhere near that size. But you're just saying that the hardship is, you want, not really saying, you want a parking garage, is what you want. You can move the building back, but the parking garage is where your hardship is.
That's one, but I think the, actually, the one that perhaps is most important and probably, I hope indisputable, is the fact that the, that the property line skews, right? So, i- if the property line were straight and parallel with the, with the road, with the curb line, we would pick up another twelve feet of depth from, from the street line. And only because the road, perhaps I should go up there and show it, but if you look at your plans, you'll note that there's a red line that comes through our plans, and that shows how, for some reason, the property line skews away easterly as it heads north on, on North Elm. It pulls further and further away till you get to the intersection. Most street lines are par- parallel with the road, like it is all the rest of that distance up and down North Elm. So there, I don't think there's any dispute, honestly, for that twelve feet, that there's a twelve-foot skew at, right at that location of the admissions building. And at the very least, I think that that may be a basis for even, you know, even an amended approval where this board determines that that is not something that we've created. There is an existing skew in the, in the property line that is unique to this particular building.
So that twelve foot, is that paved or grass?
It's, it would be grass.
No, right now it's.
Now, now it's grass?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you're right, so the, in a new subdivision, right, you have fifty-foot wide roads, thirty feet are paved, ten feet on each side remains grass. You and I think it's our lawn, it's actually owned by the town, and that's why they put the utilities in there and cut up our driveways to do it. But in these older locations, the roads are, are typically parallel to the pavement, but for some reason, and they are up and down North Elm, except in front of this location as it comes towards the intersection with Christian, it doesn't go parallel, it skews. And so, we end up with lesser area to build because it skews twelve feet off of the normal parallel street line. And so that's a unique factor to this particular location. So, while the request is for a larger variance, my client would be, certainly be pleased with a recognition that that skew is not something, that, that's unique to the property, that's not something we created, so that perhaps the reduction of that setback is, is by the additional twelve feet as opposed to that whole distance from thirteen to forty.
Except, Bob. Bruce? You're all set? Right now? Anybody else?
Thank you.
Guys all set? Go to the public, or you wanna say anymore, or?
No, we'll just, hopefully we'll have a chance to. No, we'll just, hopefully we'll have a chance to rebut after.
Yeah, before, before I close.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna open this up, so if there's anybody here to speak in favor of this application, but I want to say something before I let anybody come to the microphone. We're here to speak about the hardship, and not about whether Choate, you think Choate's good, bad, indifferent, whether the building's, you know, gonna, the sightline, traffic, anything, the crossing, we're not here to discuss that. That would be planning and zoning. We're here to discuss the hardship, and that's what I want, ask everybody, if you're gonna come up to the microphone, you're here to speak about the hardship, that's it. So is anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against this application? Yes, ma'am? Please state your name and address for the record.
Robin Hetrick, 412 Williams Road. I appreciate the presentation that was made tonight. I think it's important for this board to recognize that at several points during their presentation, they did indicate that they can move the building, it just doesn't go with the way they want it to go. And that means that there is not a hardship with the land itself. A hardship with the land itself means you cannot remediate it without the variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak against this application? Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Phil Uker, 29 Curtis Avenue. I had just been reviewing the hardship requirements, and I'm glad we got to finally speak about the hardships. I heard a lot of conversation about how good the building would be. On page two thirty-five of the zoning regulations, there are four specific conditions that are outlined, as I'm sure you're aware, I'm more stating this for the public, that the ZBA must consider so that variances won't be granted as merely a, quote, "advantage or convenience" to the property owner. I'm hoping we could take these one at a time. One condition is that no variance can be granted, it's up to gain a financial advantage. The variance can't be sought to make something less expensive. Currently, Choate owns a large empty building a couple hundred feet away from where they're proposing to build this. I heard there was discussion that they searched all over. I understand there was extensive research done on utilizing the old student center as a new admissions building. I was wondering if we could hear a little bit about why that would no longer be a viable place for the admissions building.
Go ahead, and we'll answer these afterwards, just keep your, I'd much rather get your questions out there, and you can sit down and.
Sure. And then, there's another condition, it requires that Choate not be able to make reasonable use, so I would just reiterate that it's been stated several times that the lot could be used for a building without a garage. And then, the hardship for the skewed property line is one thing, but the hardship for the slope, the stated hardship in the application, basically, all the land to the east of Elm Street slopes identically away, even in front of their new admissions, their current admissions building. So I don't think there's any peculiar or unusual about the slope of the land at this point.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak against this application?
Mike Vado, two, three seventy-seven North Elm Street, I almost forgot my address. I, I hope I don't, I know what your comment was about planning and zoning, and just to deal with the hardship, I, I hope I don't cross that line, but I'm.
Please don't.
I'm gonna try. If I am, just interrupt me, that's fine. I interrupt people all the time on the board. I, I just want to start off by saying, I don't agree with this hardship, and I don't agree with the, having the variance, but I want to say, preface my comment by saying, my family, my wife's family has had a very close relationship with Choate Rosemary Hall since nineteen sixty-one. So, we had, this is very difficult for me to reject anything that Choate School wants to do. I've always been a defender of Choate School because I love the school, I think they do bring something, Mr. Durkin, to this town, it is a magnificent place, but I think at this point, it's becoming abusive. I, and it's very hard for me to say that. I worked at Choate School for fifteen years. This is difficult. I have a couple of questions. On that drawing up there, the white line along the bottom, behind the proposed building, is that the current driveway alongside the football field? Where cars park diagonally as you drive in?
No, that white is a walking trail they're gonna have, a walking path.
That's something new?
Yes, that's added to their whole process here.
So the present football field will not be touched at all with this building?
Not, no, they're drawing.
Okay. Where would the entrance and exit be to the garage?
Christian Street.
I beg your pardon?
Christian Street, as they pointed out.
But it's not shown on that map?
It is.
Can somebody point to it for me?
Mister. Pardon me, Mr. Vado, that, that is sort of in the lane of planning and zoning, that's why it's not shown. We're looking at the setback, not the drive aisles, unfortunately, at this point. I mean, if Mr. Durbin or such would like to show you, but, but that's why it's not shown, because it's not in the lane of zoning Board of Appeals, just to clarify.
Okay, so that was my first mistake. So I can't ask what the building's gonna be made of, if it's gonna be brick or cement, I can't do any of that, okay. Can I ask a question that these people, a, a point they brought up, can I? Let me ask it, and if I shouldn't, let me know. You mentioned that the, you need this variance, one of the reasons is because the present admissions office is in the old infirmary, and they have outgrown that. And somebody made a comment, the reason why you can't fix that building or something to make it.
But, but let's get back to the variance, I mean, I, I know you're trying to ask them questions, but it, it turns into a debate at that point. So we're, we're here to discuss the hardship, and, and the reason why they're, they're asking for the hardship is, they're saying is, because, mostly because of the slope and the skewed, the property, town property line.
Well, I think the hardship is gonna cause more hardship for the people who live in that area.
Thank you. Back to the, one of the speakers that was over here, he had asked one of his beginning questions. Do you have an answer for?
There was a question about, I think, our old Student Activity Center, and why we're not just using that. I mean, I explained why we chose this site.
Hold on, and I don't want to get into this, but I just, I, I just, just want to clear that up before we go further.
Sure, I mean, it's, it, it was, we wanted a purpose-built building, right now they're in the old infirmary. The old Student Center is actually an old gym, so it's an old fieldhouse, which would require extensive additions and.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody here? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jared Liu, Curtis Avenue. And I'll just start off by saying, I have many friends at Choate, this is nothing anti-Choate, in many ways, very much pro-Choate. And, I mean, kudos to you for bringing in such a reputable architect, too. I think that really speaks highly of how seriously you all have taken this. I just had two follow-up questions to, related to the presentation. The first was, I definitely heard loud and clear twice the threat that if this parking was not underground, it was gonna be above ground, and I just wanted to clarify, is that parking Gunpowder Creek the existing parking, or you're saying you're putting in new parking if you don't get the undergrounds?
But back to, I mean, back to that.
I can ask my other question, yeah?
I, no, I know, but, but that has nothing to do with the variance and the hardship.
I thought I was just responding to the presentation.
I, I know, they, reason why they talked about that, they were trying to give us a, a reason why they're doing this, but I'd like you to keep to the hardship, the reason why you don't think it's, they should have the hardship.
Okay.
Are the variance for the hardship.
My other question's about the process, so this may be a question for you. So, in the application, there's a section that requires notification of the abutters, and I wasn't clear exactly how that's determined for who the abutters are, because in that list of thirty-two people, fifteen percent of them don't even live in Wallingford. Maybe all of them live at least half a mile away from this site. Every single person who lives on Academy Street, on Curtis Avenue, lives closer than every other person who's living in a butter.
So, I, I'm just gonna go to Amy, and she'll explain this, it has nothing to do with us or how we decide, that's a process that's done, but go ahead, Amy, explain that, please.
The abutters are identified as properties that touch the, the application, not across the streets, so Academy and Curtis Street are not included unless they abut actual Choate property, you know, those parcels. They are established from the records, from the assessor's office, the property owners of records, based on an address. So you might see a property owner with a mailing address of other than their, the property address, because that, that's identified, that's the legal requirement, it's property owner of record from the town of Wallingford's assessor, but it's touching side, on either side or to the rear, not across the street.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, that's helpful, thank you. And, and mostly, I was just picking up on the tone of, you know, sort of Choate holding themselves to a higher standard, which I very much appreciated, and thought that would be in fitting with a higher standard, we'd be thinking about who the abutters are in the larger community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here that'd like, yes, sir?
Rob Blanchard, Curtis Avenue. So, there's a couple of things.
Close the microphone, please, so we can hear.
So there's a couple of things that I referenced, the skewed property line. Now, that road, I believe, is classified as a feeder road, so if they put this building that close to the road, what happens if, if, you know, they're talking about growing this rule, growing admissions and bringing more people in, what happens if we need to put a turning lane in there to support the traffic flow that's through there? Now we're, now we're closer to the road than, than what is proposed here because we had, we've had to do that. Those skewed lines would allow for that without having to address their property lines, but it puts the building closer.
Okay.
And I guess, in relation to the setbacks, so, I was looking, doing some research, and I saw a case, it was Ward versus the Hartford ZBA, which says, granting a variance on the grounds that other properties in the area are similar is de facto creating new zoning regulation, which is not in the authority of the ZBA. And that was a court case in the state of Connecticut, Superior Court. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here that wants to speak against this application? Hearing, seeing none, back to you, counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't think that there's been any discussion, either pro or con, that the, the, other than Mr. Blanchard mentioning that the skewed line might have some benefit in the future, I suppose if you widened North Elm Street, you know, a lane or two, I guess that might, but I, I'm not so sure that that makes any sense when you have the Homestead Building, the Carrington House, the Sally Hart Lodge, and the Edsel House, all within a distance that would preclude that from happening. And again, it hasn't happened since the roads were built probably well over a hundred years ago. But I did want to point out that if this board is unconvinced with regard to the topography or the need to allow Choate to locate this building, so it does have underground parking, leaving the balance of that wonderful campus as green space, and maybe they find a way to minimize blacktopping additional locations for parking, I would ask that you consider the fact that this skewed property line now forces us to be back not forty feet, but really fifty, fifty-two feet, because the line, the difference between, I'm gonna go to the board if I might.
Go ahead, please.
Okay. And I'm not sure how well you can see it from, from here, but the red line, and I'm not, again, hopefully you can see it, the red line normally would go straight and parallel to a road. It doesn't do that here. We have a, a green line that shows how it should go, that's not the existing street line, the street line is in red, and you'll notice that the street line is parallel, parallel, and then, as it gets closer to the intersection with Christian, it begins to skew easterly. So that the difference between where the normal street line would be and the skewed property line is a distance of twelve feet. And I would, I think that to require compliance with a forty-foot setback, when you're already twelve feet back from the normal street line, puts it at a disadvantage, much further back than it would otherwise have to be. So in terms of the request for a variance, at least with regard to that twelve-foot differential based upon the skewed property line, that might be something that, you know, Choate could work with to make this still become an attractive location and that magnificent campus that it wants to have.
Thank you. Bob?
Sorry. Do you have the, across Christian, heading North Elm, is that line straight, or is that one skewed also, that corner?
I'm told by our engineer that it's straight.
Who owns that property? The one on your side that's skewed that you don't own?
The one on our side that's skewed?
Well, you're saying the thirteen feet?
Well, that's the town.
Oh, it's the right-of-way, the town right-of-way is skewed, is opposed to being.
How, how big is the town's right-of-way there, then?
Twelve feet larger than the normal width.
So it's twenty-two feet?
On that side of the road, that's correct. Where it's twelve, where it's ten feet all along the balance of, if you look at the balance of the site.
I understand what you're saying, so it's ten feet, so if you're coming from Center Street down towards Christian.
Heading north, yeah.
And so, at this point, it skews out. Why hasn't Choate, before even coming here, had talked to the town about doing something with that intersection if it doesn't, if it's skewed so much?
Well, we, again, we didn't ask the town to give up some of their road, we thought it more appropriate to come to this board seeking relief.
I just.
You all set, Bob?
Yeah, I was just.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because, I mean, other, because other businesses have come to the town and purchased land and done that, I was just curious.
Yep. Anybody else? Guys, you want, you all set?
I am.
I had one more. I didn't.
Rob Blanchard, Curtis Avenue. So, I'm, I'm just thinking about, you know, if the, if the ground's leveled out, this is all related to where they placed the building, so it has, it's related to the hardship. So if the, if the ground is leveled out where the garage is, and it ends, what, what do you see when you're coming down Christian Street? There's gotta be something exposed there if it's been leveled out.
Well, what they're saying is, is that when they, since they don't have to pull it back, that the way the slope is now, the parking garage is, be able to be underneath, that's what they're saying.
Yeah, I mean, it, it would seem to me that they could actually move the football, if they're gonna make that green space, that Gunpowder Road, and they're gonna take the driveway out there, that they could move the football field over so they could move everything back, and there's no hardship there.
Thank you. Everybody all set? Counselor, you all set?
All set.
Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing and open it up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve variance requests for front yard of thirteen feet on North Elm Street to construct a new admissions building with underground building at three thirty-three Christian Street, AKA fifty-nine North Elm Street, as shown on the Choate Admission Center site plan, layout, and landscaping.
Want to make comments?
Dated five sixteen twenty-two, received six seventeen twenty-two, and submitted plans received six seventeen twenty-two, and modic, modified application and plans received eight twelve twenty-two, subject to comments from Allison Kapaschinsky, Town Engineer, dated six thirty twenty-two, resubmitted nine eight twenty-two, and comments from Fire Marshal received seven one twenty-two. So moved.
Ray, I gotta hold you up here.
Okay.
Tom Wolfert wants to make a comment before we go into this, so we're gonna have to redo that. Go ahead, Tom. Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you for your detailed application information and presentation. Choate and Choate Rosemary Hall, without a doubt, has put Wallingford on the map. Visitors enjoy a pristine-looking campus who support local businesses, merchants, and restaurants. Your improvements with lighting, better crossing lights, when the students take their eyes off their cellphones and use them, except, and this is the most, but North Elm Street and Christian Street is the most feared intersection in Wallingford. And during the school year, all mortars seem to have to look at their watch and figure out what time it is. 7:00 AM, 12:00 AM, 12:00 noon, 5:00 PM, and 6:00 PM. And you cannot have enough eyes to safely navigate through that intersection. There is no real hardship to permit this building of this size on this site, and there are plenty of other open space where it can go. Having said that, Mr. Chairman, I cannot support this application.
Thank you. Mr. Conroy.
Hello. I'm gonna echo him, I'm gonna echo Tom's sentiments about Choate. Choate's a great institution, and I have to say that I understand that you, the skewed property line is part of the request for your hardship, but the property lines along that street, along that intersection, are not straight. They're not an equal distance off any of the properties. I believe some are closer to the road, some are farther away, and they're, and they're very rarely straight. So, I'm gonna have to also agree that I can't support this variance.
Thank you. Anybody else got a comment? Now, there's a motion on the floor. Ray, right off.
I need a second.
I second the motion. Motion to approve, Mr. Conroy.
No to approve.
Mr. Wolfher.
No to approve.
Mr. Rice.
No to approve.
Ms. Harris.
Yes to approve.
And Chairman Rosick.
No. Motion is failed. Thank you. Next up is variance request 22-030, variance request for Choate Rosemary Hall for 245 North Main Street. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have staff comments regarding application 22-030, a variance request from Choate Rosemary Hall Foundation at 245 North Main Street. Applicant seeks front yard of 26 feet, where 30 feet is required in order to construct an addition to provide accessible entry and interior movement among floors within the building by adding an elevator and ramps at 245 North Main Street in a CLB district. Parcel is a corner lot with front yards on North Main Street and Curtis Ave. Setback request is fronting Curtis Avenue and pertains to 64 square feet of encroaching building of an addition less than 200 square feet in total. Location of addition is also in proximity to parking, which is also accessed from Curtis Mr. Chairman, we also have an interdepartmental memorandum from Kevin Pajini, Town Planner, dated September 13th, and that's it.
Thank you. Well, welcome back.
Thank you. Seat's still warm. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your record, my name is Dennis Sennaviva. I'm an attorney with the Sennaviva Law Firm, 721 Broad Street in Meriden. I represent the owner and applicant. To my left is Patrick Durbin, the Chief Financial Officer of Choate Rosemary Hall, and to his left is Brian K., our project engineer from SLR. The property, as you know from the application, is a .54 acre parcel of land located on the north-easterly corner of North Main Street at its intersection with Curtis Avenue. It is owned, as your memorandum indicates, CLB, the Central Limited Business District, and it's a corner lot, therefore it has two front yards. The parcel is developed with a bed and breakfast inn, which according to the assessor's records was built in 1891, which is even before me. It has its three stories in height with over 6,000 square feet of living area. Internal layout of the existing building identifies the existing staircase for the three floors to be located in the southeast-ly corner of the building. Existing parking area is along the east side of the parcel, which is rear to North Main Street, and along the side of Curtis Avenue, it is accessed from a driveway on Curtis Avenue. Tonight, our request is a variance of 3.27 feet. I know the application says four, we've refined it to a more specific number. It's 3.27-foot variance of the front yard setback required along Curtis Avenue only. And again, that's a front yard technically, it's the building's side yard, if you will, but it is what it is. So, the actual, the actual proposed location of this addition would bring it 26.73 feet away from the property line where 30 feet is required. The applicant is proposing to construct an addition at grade for ADA accessibility, again, the American Disabilities Act, accessibility to the inn, and in that addition would be an elevator, which is required now per the 1990 American with Disabilities Act, whenever any substantial renovations are done to a building. I'm gonna have Brian just go to the board and sort of lay out for you where this addition is. Hopefully, you know where it is. I know that there was a question asked at P&amp;Z, and I think the response was that it was in the front yard, but I believe that it was misinterpreted by the P&amp;Z that it was on North Main Street. Again, this is on our side yard, still a front yard on Curtis. Brian?
Hi there. My name is Brian K. with SLR International out of Cheshire, Connecticut. I can take you through the next couple steps just to show you where this building addition is and how we landed on this specific location. Just to orient everybody, this is North Main Street on the bottom with Curtis Ave running up the page. As Dennis mentioned, the addition, which is inclusive of the elevator and access to the elevator and then access to the first floor of the building. As Dennis mentioned, primary purpose for this addition is for ADA access. The location of this elevator is simplest, simplistically described by replacing where the back porch, taking the back porch and putting the elevator in this location. As people would use the site here, they're gonna pull into this parking lot, park in the back, come down a sidewalk, and then enter the building at this location. One of our main reasons for not using any of the corner of the buildings on the front side is obviously because of the classical signature architecture of the front of that building, and much of our logic for the back left corner, as shown up here, has to do with internal circulation of the building itself. On the first floor, it's the kitchen. On the second floor, it's a bathroom. Where we've located, like I said, it's already the back porch, so in terms of use of the building, it makes all the sense in the world. And what's driving the building to go over the setback, like Dennis mentioned, the 3.27 feet, is specifically a six-foot elevator and then a six-foot hallway to get out of that elevator. That's what's pushing our limits and getting us to that determining point. So, we're trying to keep this as simple as possible. We think it's the best location, and like I said, the only building elements which are pushing out from the existing building are the elevator itself and the hallway to get in it. I believe that's it. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to walk you through it.
I don't particularly, I mean, I understand why you're in the back, the parking's in the back, and it's either one or the other corner, and evidently removing the porch and putting this there is a good fit. Has anybody got any questions?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Karen, go ahead.
My question is, the purpose for which Choate is going to use this will remain as an inn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Bob?
Can you just explain again the reason why you can't put it on the back of the building?
It's on the back.
Yeah, but, but more towards the parking lot, not on the corner there, more square.
Yeah, so, I can flip to another page. These are just elevations of what that addition actually looks like. I just flipped to this plan to, actually, you can see it right here. So, on the back of this building, there's, there's other means of egress. There's a, there's a hatchway in the back, there's other utilities that go in right there. That's really driving this location. And like I said, that elevator pit itself is right along the foundation edge of the building. It can't go any closer, and once we start to wrap the corner, it complicates things with how that, the structure of that building is planned and utilized current day.
You all set, Bob? Anybody else? Bruce? Yeah, I do. It's actually to you, Amy. What does the town attorney say? An ADA request, correct?
This is an accessibility request, an ADA compliance, so public safety and accessibility certainly is weighs heavier than does hardship. And it's a very small ask.
Right, yeah, I know. Now, well, what did the inn do before?
It didn't require it. It's only, yeah, it wasn't compliant, number one, and number two, it, there's a need for compliance, one, that's Choate's MO anyway, to make sure that it's compliant, but also once you start making any changes to the, to the building, you need now to meet the ADA 1990 requirements. And, and as I was gonna make, you know, just sort of confirm the information that Brian's given to you, I wanted to point out that the ADA mandates the size, the height, the width, the door width, and the depth of the ADA-compliant elevator. It also requires an elevator be located in an area that's only accessible, that's, I'm sorry, that's easily accessible, especially by wheelchair-bound individuals, so that the size is not, is dictated by that compliance. And only a small portion, as your staff memorandum points out, about 64 square feet, will encroach on our side yard, unfortunately, a front yard on Curtis Avenue. And actually, I don't think it goes out to that large tree, you know, that, it's not even close, I don't know if you've driven by on that, on the east side, on that, that would be the south side. There's a large cut tree, maybe it went down in one of the storms. It doesn't reach anywhere near that location. So, the location of the proposed addition is predicated, as Brian points out, on the pre-existing layout of the building, exterior and interior utility locations, but also the location of the existing stairwell. So, you, normally, you would put the elevator next to a stairwell for those people who can use the stairs, and it's the entry point from the existing parking area. So, that's, again, it's an important facet. The other sides of the building, particularly the north or the front edge on North Main Street, would not provide easy accessibility, certainly outside, leading to the building or inside, based upon, as Brian points out, pre-existing guest room locations, which are not being changed, and the kitchen. And then we argue that besides the ADA requirement, the impact on the neighborhood and the comprehensive plan of Wallingford zoning, when you look at a 3.27 intrusion into the Curtis Avenue front yard is negligible, it's actually, for all intents and purposes, I suspect imperceptible. In exchange, the building would gain ADA compliance, allowing people with wheelchairs or other disabilities the ability to safely access the inn. So, that's the motivation.
And I assume that, am I on still?
No.
No. I assume that, that that's the side of the building where you'll make the rooms compliant, too. I know that doesn't have anything to do with us, Joe, we're just asking. And you're gonna make the rooms also compliant. All right, that's it, thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Do you have anything further?
That's it, Mr. Chair.
Anybody here to speak in favor of this application? You wanna speak in favor?
Jared Liu, Curtis Avenue. Just, I had a moment to review the plans last week or so, went to pull them, and I'm not an architect, but I thought it made sense, from what I know of the egress of the building. I think that's exactly right. I think you'd really have to change around the room layout. I think that, you know, certainly seems like it presents a hardship, so I, I'm in favor. The only thing I was curious about was, how does this affect that tree that's been half-chopped down for the last couple of years? Does that now come out with this?
I'm not sure what the future of that tree stump will be, but the, we don't, we haven't hired a contractor to know what, if that would be disrupted or not.
It's that same corner, obviously, so, okay.
Thank you. Does anybody here speak in favor? Seeing none, anybody here to speak against this application?
Rob Blanchard, Curtis Avenue. This is my front yard, so it's, it's meaningful to me. So, I have a picture here, I don't know if you wanna take it up here. It's an actual picture of the building next to where they're planning on building it there. And as you can see, so we were talking a little bit before about the unique architectural aspects of this building from the front. There are very unique architectural aspects of the building from the side of this as well. So, what you're putting in is something that's rather kind of industrial-looking with the way it is, and, you know, given that it's non-conforming and you're making it more non-conforming, it would seem to make more sense to put it on the backside of the building, right, where it's not gonna, it's not gonna have an impact on the view of the architecture, it's, and it's not gonna be non-conforming, right? So, you know, because it costs more or because it's more difficult is not a rationale that's part of the regulations on granting a variance. Variances require, you know, a hardship, and I think they said the hardship here was public safety. Now, they also mentioned that it's gonna remain an inn. Is that gonna remain an inn for private use of the school, or is it gonna be an inn for the use for public?
So, we're discussing the hardship for that.
Yeah, well, that's, so it's the stated hardship.
I really don't wanna get into, it's their building, their use. I understand that it was asked, but we're here to discuss the hardship and the three feet.
Well, I am discussing the hardship, sorry.
The three feet.
I am discussing the hardship because the stated hardship on the application says public safety, and, and I would like to know if it's public use or private use. That's, that's something that I think should be a consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Any, yes, ma'am, sorry.
Eily McKean, Burke Heights Drive. Much to my husband's chagrin, I love old houses. I love old houses. I've been in a lot of old houses. I've been in a lot of big vics like this one, often under the guise as a potential buyer or with other people who are potential buyers. I've seen a lot of old vics that have elevators, and since they're already making changes to the rooms by widening doorways, both to rooms and to bathrooms, I don't see why they can't convert big old closet, co-closet, first floor, second floor, like so many I've seen. One up in Burlington, Connecticut, in fact, that had a very nice, good size, actually, elevator that went up between two guest rooms, actually, it was two guest rooms in a hallway, from right behind the, the grand old staircase. So, I think that there may be some creative alternatives, maybe if they lose a room and lose the coatroom, that they could probably fit it indoors and not disrupt the outside of the building or further come out of compliance with the setbacks. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here that'd like to speak against this application? Seeing none. Counselor, do you have anything further?
I think that we have, those are architecturally drawn drawings. We have our engineer, they've looked at all the other possible locations to fix this particular addition for ADA accessibility. I'm not sure they can convert a closet to an elevator space, especially when it's ADA-compliant. I mean, it's not just the elevator, it's also the, sort of the waiting area, the entry level. It has to be wide enough to allow for navigation of a wheelchair- It has to be wide enough to allow for navigation of a wheelchair. So, this is the spot, again, the sense is that this does provide ADA compliance. It makes the building more accessible and more safe. And the incursion of 3.27 feet, you know, I think will be, from the road as you're driving by, imperceptible. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna close the public hearing and open it up for discussion and possible action by the board. Does anybody have any comments they'd like to make? Yeah, waiting for a motion.
Make a motion, approve the variance request for front yard 26 feet to construct an accessible addition, including elevator and ramps at 245 North Main Street, as shown on Choate Rosemary Hall, Victorian in renovation. Site plan dated 7/8/22 and submitted exterior elevation plan dated 7/8/22, subject to. So move.
I second it.
Motion to approve, Mr. Conroy.
No to approve.
Mr. Wolfher.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Rice.
Yes to approve.
Ms. Harris.
Yes to approve.
And Chairman Rusik.
Yes. The variance has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is 22-032 Special Exception Request for Anastasio for 43 Algonquin Drive and... Oh, sorry. 22-031 variance request for Anastasio for 43 Algonquin Drive, and also 22-032 Special Exception Request for Anastasio for 43 Algonquin Drive. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman. Staff comments. Application is for a side yard of 4.4 feet, where 30 feet is required, and building coverage of 12%, where maximum 10% is permitted, to construct a 792-square-foot addition to detached garage at 43 Algonquin Drive in an RU40 district. A companion special exception request for the additional garage area follows. Proposed garage additions are for 576 square feet to the rear of the existing garage and 216 square feet to the northern side. Existing detached garage was erroneously located 3.6 feet from side boundary, and therefore, expanding the nonconformity requires variance approval. This office cannot discern the method of vehicular access to the new 576 square feet of garage space, based on the survey and one page of depicted elevation submitted. Additional garage area requested brings total garage area on the parcel greater than the footprint of the dwelling, as well as creating the need to seek building coverage variance. Board should consider whether the use of the additional 792 square feet of garage area is for vehicular and other storage or otherwise.
Is there any other correspondence? Did I see anything for this?
Nope. No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, for the record. My name is Christopher Giuliano. I'm a licensed land surveyor and professional engineer with Giuliano Associates. I maintain office at 405 Main Street in the Yalesville section of town. I'm here tonight representing the property owner, Mr. Christopher Anastasio, with respect to...
Will you pull the microphone a little closer to you?
I apologize.
That's fine, thank you.
I'm here representing the applicant, Christopher Anastasio, with respect to the proposed variance request and special exception request. As was noted in the correspondence, we are looking for a side yard variance and a area variance with respect to the addition to the rear of the existing garage. The purpose of the additional garage space is for the storage of classic vehicles. Mr. Anastasio shows, builds, tinkers with classic cars, so he needs the additional garage space. So, that is the reason why. Access, which was another question, will be through the existing garage. So, basically, the two spaces that would be in this proposed location would be accessed through the existing garage doors, so parking would be in tandem. So, there's no other access, no other driveways. The reason why the variances are needed, you have a 23,000-square-foot parcel located in an R40 zone. This parcel, along with the others in the subdivision for Algonquin Drive, was created, I believe, around, right around 1960. Zoning for the town of Wallingford came in in '58. However, the zone for this area and the way this subdivision was approved, it was all proved as half-acre lots. And then, sometime between 1960 and today, we went through this area and the town rezoned portions of this area as R40s. So, from day one that this subdivision was created, to when it actually got assigned an R40 zone over the area, you immediately have nonconformity. And you can see that by the existing house itself, doesn't even conform to the R40 setbacks. And none of the lots, this is probably my third lot along Algonquin, where I've done a survey and done work for other neighbors, and it's the same problem you have in this entire subdivision, similar problem you may have up in the Bridgeland area. We have a zone applied to an area, but the zone doesn't represent the size of the lots. So, if you were to look at this property from the standpoint of an R18 zone, which it is more in common with, you would have 20-foot side yard setbacks, you'd have building coverage of 15%. So, the hardship is that the zone that was designated for this property doesn't match the size of the property. So, the two... The area setback, I would comply if it was an R18 zone. The side yard setback, that's more of a survey issue. There was a surveyor who did this property, the subdivision, and the properties in the back, between about 1955 and 1960. He has three different maps, three different sets of information on the maps. None of the maps correspond, and they all have common property lines. So, it's not uncommon, from my perspective and my profession, to see that, once we finally rectify some of the errors on the old survey maps, that we do not, you know, we are closer to a property bound than one initially thought. The reason why this is as close to the side yard as it is, is likely because the sunroom porch that's noted on here was added after. And if that sunroom porch wasn't there, this would conform to... And we had our five-foot setback from a normal detached garage, because once a detached garage is behind an existing residence, we can go within five feet. And that's probably what happened here. They thought they were five feet away. Obviously, it was closer, once we figured out exactly where the boundaries were. And at some point, the sunroom porch was built, the sunroom was built, which then negates the ability to use that five-foot setback, so we have to adhere to the current setback. So, based upon the way the lot is laid out, it doesn't make sense to try to do a second detached garage and put it somewhere else on the property. You have the added access, driveway around, it would have to be very, you know, it would have to be to the rear of the existing garage and existing house, and therefore, it really wouldn't logically make sense. So, that's why the applicant has asked that we be able to attach it exactly to the existing garage, and we looked at possibly offsetting it to get five feet. But as noted, we can't really do that, because as soon as we attach the existing garage, we, you know, we already need a variance. So, it makes sense to keep the proposed addition in line with the existing garage, roof peaks, construction, both cost and just construction in general. To try to offset it, to do something different, it would be a nightmare. So, that's the request with respect to the side yard variance for the garage. If you have any questions with respect to that aspect, I would be happy to answer them at this time.
Well, just clear something up, because we were kind of looking at this. So, there's garage, as you said, garage there now, he's gonna add on to the back of the garage. This is gonna be storage for... He collects old cars?
Yes.
And no commercial use, just for his own use?
That is correct.
What's the workshop gonna be for?
The workshop is a workshop, like a wood workshop.
Okay.
So, he also likes to tinker in that respect as well. So, he wanted to add it on to the garage. Since he was doing one, it was easier to come back, to do both and get both things approved because of the area request. If I hadn't done it at this time, I would've had to come back for a second variance, and it didn't make much sense. So, we decided to show the workshop at the same time.
Amy, you look like you want to say something.
Well, we caught... Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Caught the workshop was not included originally in the application for the special exception, but I did catch it and altered it before the legal notice was created. That's considered part of the garage, even though it's a workshop. We're allowed to have a workshop or storage area, it just has to be capable of housing motor vehicles. The question I have, when it went with regard to the elevations, is the side elevation was depicted with overhead doors. If that was indeed a side elevation, thus the question, how are you putting cars in there? Number one, you've clarified that, so I guess the elevation's wrong. So, I still think we need to be clear on what the structure may look like, et cetera, the board should. Also, the detached garage shows the evidence why we need a survey nowadays. This was, according to assessor records, I'm not sure how accurate, this was erected in 1985. Five-foot setback applied there as well, but it was placed 3-point-something feet. So, there is a concern in not so much meeting a 30-foot setback, but 3 and 1/2 feet, 4 feet, 48 feet long, it is awful close to the border. Something to bear, understandably how that came to be. But, anyway, I just wanted to make those couple notations. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. So, clear up the drawing, is it incorrect?
The elevation, I believe it is incorrect. I, I mean, I definitely would think that he would have, would want a personal door on that side. The only thing I could think of for a garage door, I don't know why he would need it on that side, because there is no driveway access on that side. It's only from, the driveway only comes from the front.
Right, I mean, he's gonna, as far as you know, there's gonna be a straight-through garage.
As far as I know, yes.
Okay, so the drawing is incorrect.
I believe so. I really don't know. I did not, I did not prepare the elevation.
Amy, do you have anything further you want to?
Nope, that was it, just, it was, it was very unclear. It looked like he had to sprout wings and fly to the backyard to get into the driving doors.
Has anybody got any questions they'd like to ask? Bob, you look like you want to say something.
Question, on the, on the original garage that was built that's 3 and 1/2 feet away, was he the owner of the house at that particular time?
If you give me a second to look at the property card, I will...
And was, was a permit pulled for that?
Oh, no, the drawing was wrong.
Mr. Anastasio purchased the house in 2001. So, no, he didn't own at the time. As far as permitting... I do not see anything on here that talks about permitting, so I can't say yes or no to that.
And you mentioned a sunroom in the way there, was that permitted then?
Again, the...
It's not there, okay.
The information I have is not here.
Okay, and the sunroom was put on, do you know when then?
That I do not know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The reason is, because, again, to the previous, you mentioned, Amy, that it's gonna be 3 and 1/2 feet for 45 feet long, or whatever the length is, and the town doesn't look to continue nonconforming uses for a great period of time, if possible. And the, you know, the, Mr. Giuliani mentioned that it wouldn't be, it wouldn't look as good in the backyard, but it wouldn't be in that 3 and 1/2 foot setback.
We did not require surveys for building permits until 2009. This was erected in 1985. I'm sure it was a case of that tree or that fence is my property, you know, what it was at the time. I discovered now. The variance is required because they're asking to expand that nonconformity.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Obviously, they cannot correct it, nor are they gonna be asked to correct it in arrears. They're asking to make it more of it. That's your determination to make, and it has no bearing upon, again, the sunroom is not... It's still behind the sun, the addition is behind the sunroom. So, it still would only require a five-foot setback. So, really, they're looking for 4.4, but they need five, and five's pretty small, so...
In your comments, though, you're also talking, coverage is over the...
It's over the building coverage, it's just something to consider, and these are, these applications are perhaps in the wrong order, where it makes more sense, where you should sort of evaluate the special exception typically first. Are you gonna grant the area, and then where are you gonna put it? They're a little backwards, be mindful of that, the way they were enumerated. There's two things going on, the special exception does not have the threshold or the hardship of the variance, so...
I understand, but...
And Mr. Giuliano was absolutely correct. This, this area had a RU40 designation, 40,000 square foot now, but it was originally an R18, only requiring 18,000. So, the coverage would've been different. Whether you feel that suffices is, again, your determination, but he's absolutely correct, it was changed.
Thank you.
You're all set right now? Anybody else? No? Anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against this application? Hearing seeing none, Mr. Giuliano, do you have anything further you'd like to add?
Nothing further, sir.
I'm gonna close the public hearing and open up for discussion and possible action by the board. Bruce?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I mean, I understand the special exception that they wanna, that they wanna add on for a classic car garage, and that they don't agree with the zoning that, as currently as it is. Well, I don't believe that we should, as a zoning board of appeals, approve this variance, because it's really a zoning issue. If the zoning needs to be changed, it needs to go back to zoning, in my opinion. So, I can't support this variance.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? She gave you the look?
I move a variance request for a side yard of 4.4 feet to construct an addition to detached garage at 43 Algonquin Drive, as shown on limited property boundary survey, land of Christopher A. Anastasio. Number 43 Algonquin Drive, dated 6/5/22, revision date 7/11/22, and submitted plan received 7/14/22.
It's a motion to approve, right?
So move.
Did you have to say subject to?
What?
Isn't there subject to?
Well, we're not gonna do the variance. We do them separately.
Right, we're gonna do them separately.
This is a point of order, you're on to clarify the motion, this is a variance for the side yard, right? Did you read, may I, Mr. Rice? There's two, two variance requests and one special exception request.
Right.
This is the first, this is the first one relative to the side yard, thank you.
So move.
Second.
Motion to approve the side yard, Mr. Conroy.
No to approve.
Mr. Wolfher.
No to approve.
Mr. Rice.
Yes, to approve.
Ms. Harris.
Yes, to approve.
Chairman Rusik.
Chairman Russick?
Yes.
Motion failed.
Make a motion for variance request for building coverage of 12% to construct in addition to detailed garage at 43 Algonquin Drive, as shown on limited property boundary survey land by Christopher A. Anastasio. 43 Algonquin Drive, dated 6/5/22, revision date 7/11/22, and submitted plan received 7/14/22. So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve the building coverage, Mr. Conroy.
No to approve.
Mr. Wolfher?
No to approve.
Mr. Rice?
Yes, to approve.
Ms. Harris?
Yes, to approve.
And Chairman Russick?
Yes, to approve. Motion failed.
Okay, we're moving on to 22-032 Anastasio, 43 Algonquin Drive, special exception. Special exception request for total garage area of 1,368 square feet to construct 792 square foot addition to a detached garage at 43 Algonquin Drive, as shown on limited property boundary survey land of Christopher A. Anastasio. Number 43 Algonquin Drive, dated 6/5/22, revision date 7/11/22, and submitted plan received 7/14/22. So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve special exception, Mr. Conroy.
No to approve.
Mr. Wolfher?
No to approve.
Mr. Rice?
Yes, to approve.
Ms. Harris?
Yes, to approve.
And Chairman Russick?
Yes. Motion failed. Thank you. Next up is variance request 22-033, a variance request for Mark Development LLC, 1107 North Rip Road. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman. Applicant requests a front yard height variance of 60 feet front yard and 38 feet height, where 38 feet height requires 100-foot front yard to construct 130,016 square foot warehouse, 23,679 square feet of which is within the town of Wallingford, and the remaining 106, 337 square feet in the city of Meriden at 1107 North Rip Road in an I, uh, IX district. Bulk standard regulations in the IX district require all setbacks be increased by five feet for each foot of height requested over 30 feet. Therefore, 38-foot building height would require an additional 40 feet of front yard, requiring 100 feet versus 60 feet for this proposal. The 60-foot front yard request pertains only to the minimum point of setback at the southwest corner of the proposed structure. Board is tasked with determination as it applies to the front yard requirement and corresponding height requirement only. Applicant is simultaneously applying to the city of Meriden and will be following the ZBA determination with site plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that's all I have for correspondence.
Thank you. Well, welcome back. You can't get enough, could you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for your record, my name is Dennis Sennaviva, I'm an attorney with the Sennaviva Law Firm, 721 Broad Street in Meriden. With me tonight, to my left, is John Orsini, who's the principal of Mark Development, the applicant and owner of the property in question. To his left is Jim Cassidy, the project engineer from the firm of Halcy Pearson and Cassidy, who make a portion of the presentation this evening. This is really, um, an unusual application for me. This is, I think, the first time I've had an application where the property is located in two different towns. Uh, the parcel is 6.36 acres in Wallingford, which is before you this evening, and it's 48.76 acres in Meriden. Uh, it is zoned in Wallingford IX. The property has significant wetlands features and, and grade restrictions that Jim will talk about as part of our presentation, and provides, we believe, the basis for granting the appeal. Now, the applicant is proposing to construct 130,016 square foot building, don't forget the 16, uh, located partially in both towns. 23,679 square feet of the building would be in Wallingford, and 106,337 square feet would be located in Meriden. So perhaps this would be a good time for, um, Mr. Cassidy to go up to the board and just show you where the property line is, I mean, the, uh, the town lines are, and how they bisect the building.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Jim Cassidy with the engineering firm of Halcy Pearson and Cassidy. Um, as Dennis described the property, the overall property is about 58 acres. Um, this would be North Rip Road on the left-hand side of the page. Flexall, the former Flexall Building is up on the top portion here, uh, although when I look from a distance, there is a red line on this, uh, the red line is the property line, which actually comes down along a common access driveway with Flexall, down to the back, and actually loops back up to Murdoch, and then continues off into the north, down through here, down along 91, and then comes back to North Rip Road. Uh, so in this area, we have about 467 feet of frontage along North Rip Road. Uh, the building that we're talking about this evening is this darker brown rectangle, uh, that's a building with a footprint of 100 and six, 130,016 square feet. The building itself is 20 hun, sorry, 222 feet, three inches deep. Uh, the lighter rectangle that you see off on the northeast or northwest corner of the site, uh, is a building that was recently approved and constructed and occupied at this point, um, back in April of this past year. Uh, the town line, shown in purple here, cuts through the property. As Attorney Sennaviva mentioned, we have about 6.3 acres, uh, the southern portion is Wallingford, so you have about 6.3 acres of Wallingford, and the remaining 42 acres is in Meriden down in this location. The property is, uh, extremely restricted by wetlands. Uh, there's two wetlands corridors on the property, there's the one off to the west, uh, and then there's this one off between this proposed building and 91. Uh, it's a wetlands area that's around the water course, it continues in a norly direction, eventually going under Culver, uh, underneath 91. Uh, and as you can see, as you go further and further down the access drive, this property becomes more and more restricted, uh, as we go down. Um, do you want to add more, Dennis, or do you want me to go through the remaining portion?
I think, um, the reason we're here is because the building that's being proposed, besides its size, it has a, a proposed height of 38 feet at the highest point of the, of the roof line, and I, uh, I know that your roof heights are measured differently under your regulations, that depending on the nature of the style of the roof, some are measured to the median height of the roof, and some are measured to the top of the roof, and, um, it's just a little confusing, but Jim can explain, say, I'm not sure that under your regulations, it's actually 38 feet tall, it might be something like 36 at the median.
Sure. Um, so on the architectural plans themselves, uh, this would be the southern elevation, so this is the elevation it's going to face towards North Rip Road. Um, from the average grade on the outside of the building to the extreme peak, uh, it's 38 feet. There's a very slight pitch, it is peaked in the center, but there's a very slight pitch to the west and to the east. At the two E's, it'll be 34 feet, so technically, by your definition, uh, the mean of the two would be 36 feet, although, uh, we, we did apply for 38 feet. Uh, Dennis, do you want to expand on what the actual requirement is?
Sure. So, again, in your regulations, you have a, um, 60-foot setback, which we comply with, but that's at a height of 30 feet, so your max, in the IX zone, there's a maximum height of the building at 30 feet. This is an industrial building, industrial manufacturing, that the normal, uh, building height for those types of buildings in this market is 38 feet. It's 38-foot-high, um, roofs or ceiling height in the existing building on the Meriden part of the site. Uh, there was approval across the street about a year ago on North Rip for Mr. Orsini, that was a 250,000-square-foot building that was also 38 feet tall. That's pretty much the standard or norm for these warehouse, uh, industrial buildings in the industrial zone. It's an industrial zone in, in Meriden also. Meriden doesn't have any, uh, similar height restrictions, they allow, uh, heights that exceed the 30 feet, they're at 60 feet, uh, so we're not in front of the zoning board of appeals in Meriden. Your regulations say that for every foot above the 30-foot height restriction, uh, you need to push your building back from the front yard setback again, uh, an additional five feet. So when we had it at 38 feet, which would be eight feet higher than the 30-foot maximum, that would require we pushed the building back 40 feet, eight times five. So you add 40 feet on to the required 60 feet, it would be 100 feet back from the road. And what Jim's going to point out in part of the presentation is that the vast majority of the building, in fact, complies with the 100-foot setback. It's only the front corner, the southwesterly corner, that does not meet that requirement, and then again, it's based upon the angle of the building and the wetlands around the site that limit, uh, our, our, um, location of the building. Jim is telling me now that perhaps because the building, under your measurements of height, is only 36 feet tall, that you would only need it to be back 90 feet. And so, um, the vast, even more of the building, and Jim will, will point that out, of the building is compliant with that, with that zoning requirement. So it, again, if you look at the building, you'll notice that it is, it is angled to the road, to North Rip Road. That's based upon, as Jim has shown in the larger site plan, the wetlands that are immediately, um, uh, east of the site and, and to the rear, which is north. And Jim, perhaps you can just show the distances, where this is completely compliant with the 90-foot setback, and, and where we're looking for the variance.
So on this blow-up plan, again, North Rip Road is off to your left, uh, the red line represents the property line. So this is the southern half of the building, the purple line would represent the town line. Uh, as Attorney Sennaviva had mentioned, we have to skew the building, uh, towards the road, uh, so it would not directly impact the wetlands and also meet the program where we have the loading areas out back. The yellow lines on this plan represent, number one, uh, would be the 60-foot building line. Based upon a 38-foot height, as Attorney Sennaviva had mentioned, that would push us up to 100-foot yard setback represented by this yellow line. Uh, at this front corner, this, uh, southwesterly corner of the building, uh, we're at 60.06 feet. Uh, as we go to the east, uh, obviously, we increase our dimension. This is the midpoint of the building itself, at that point, I'm at 107 feet, so I'm seven feet beyond, uh, what'd be required, and by the time I get to the southeasterly corner, the furthest-most point, I'm 158.6 feet. Uh, so if you take a look, again, the building itself is 222 feet, three inches wide, of that, about 133 of it is compliant at 100-foot setback. Uh, and, uh, again, as Attorney Sennaviva had mentioned, if we go specifically by your definition of building height, it actually is a 36-foot-high building, so it'd actually be 10 feet less, so we'd even have more, probably like 150 to 160 feet of this big building that would actually be compliant. Uh, but again, to, to get the building in that we need to meet the program, uh, that they're looking to, uh, have a tenant for this, this site, uh, we had to get a certain depth, we had to orientate it in this manner, so we don't have any direct impacts to the wetlands. Um, I'll note that we did get a wetlands approval, uh, to have activities in the upland review area, uh, but no direct impacts to the wetlands, and so it's very, it's difficult, it's a very tough site to work with, uh, for this type of use.
I think the other thing we wanted to point out, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, is the fact that you measure the height from the median average grade of the land. This property sits, as you've, as you've driven by, it sits below the roadway, so then in terms of, of height and perception, uh, it, the road sits a, a couple of feet higher than the property as it, as it, um, as it flows down from North Rip to the front of the building. Uh, so that is a practical matter, if one were to measure from the street, uh, you would have even more of that frontage of that building compliant with the, with the setback. So the, it's, and I think if you go back to the other picture, Jim, you can show that, you know, the topography does preclude certain, uh, movement. Now, could there be compliance? I suppose if you wanted to notch the building back, then I suspect there would be compliance. But in, in terms of, of, um, in this industrial park area, having an industrial building that is, uh, compatible with, with the others in that neighborhood, Mr. Orsini does a nice product, uh, I think, um, the town seems to be happy about this application, and actually both towns, uh, getting more manufacturing, warehousing uses in, in both locations. That's our pitch, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So the 30, actually, the 38 feet is in Meriden, the, the peak of the, the height of the roof.
The vast majority of it is.
Yeah. Okay, has anybody got any questions for the applicant? Bruce?
Yeah, I do. Um, so, can you move that corner of that building back and not impact the wetlands?
Move the corner?
Yep.
No, not without impacting the wetlands. We're, right now, we're, we got a permit in, uh, in Meriden to be about 10 feet off the wetlands. Uh, and that's, to, actually, to accomplish that, we need to build a eight-to-10-foot-high retaining wall, so we didn't have a direct impact on the wetlands. So it, it's, it's about as tight as it's going to get on this site.
All right. Anybody else? Anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against it? Hearing, seeing none? Do you have anything further?
I don't, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing, open up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Make a motion. Make a motion to approve variance request for a front yard of 60 feet, where 100 feet is required for building height, and 38 feet to construct a warehouse distribution center at 1,107 North Rip Road, as shown on the zoning improvement location survey. Prepared for Mark Development LLC and John Orsini property located at 1,107 North Rip Road, Meriden and Wallingford, Connecticut, dated May 3rd, 2022, revision dated August 5th, 2022, and submitted elevations received August 5th, 2022. So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Conroy.
No to approve.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes to approve.
Mr. Rice?
Yes to approve.
Ms. Harris?
Yes, to approve.
And Chairman Russick?
Yes, to approve.
Thank you.
Thank you for investing in Wallingford.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Next up is, uh, variance 22-035, variance request for Greenwood, 29 Pleasant Street. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, we do. We have staff comments. Uh, applicant requests front yard of 32 feet, where 40 feet is required, and side yard of 14.21 feet, where 20 feet is required, to construct a vertical addition, a dormer, on the front of the dwelling at 29 Pleasant Street in an R-18 district. Dormer has already been constructed without building or zoning permits. Building Department issued a stop-work order July 12th, 2022, as a result of a site visit. Property as a result of this referral is currently in zoning violation for same. Applicant is seeking variance approvals in order to rectify construction and obtain necessary zoning approval and building permits to allow. Existing building was non-conforming with respect to both front and side yard setbacks, and the vertical addition constitutes expansion of these non-conformities. Mr. Chairman, there is also a, um, letter from the town of Wallingford to Ms. Levatino, dated July 12th, 2022.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, good evening, my name is Frank Urbah, I own Central Connecticut Property Services, I'm the general contractor that was hired by Mrs. Greenwood for the construction of the dormer. Uh, my address is 347 Jones Hollow Road in Marlboro, Connecticut.
Okay, so please explain what's going on here.
So it was a simple error on, uh, on my part, quite honestly. I pulled, uh, I've owned a business for 20 years, uh, formerly in Wallingford, growing up in Wallingford. I've never made an error like this before. That day, I filed four permits in the town of Wallingford for construction, two in West Hartford, one in Glastonbury. I'm one of three employees of my business, I'm hands-on all day as a carpenter, and then do paperwork on nights and weekends. Um, Stephanie had, and I had been going back and forth for months in regards to this project. I had all drawings done, the drawings that you're looking- to this project. I had all drawings done, the drawings that you're looking at right now. However, I was slow to get her a contract, so she had not signed a contract. So when I went to pull permits, I had not filed her permit. I did hire, one of the permits that I filed that day was for a project about five minutes away, in which we also needed a variance, and it went through proper procedures. We hired Stonewall Boundaries, just as we used for this property as well. Quite honestly, it was a simple mistake. That property that I already have approved through the building department that has gone through proper zoning still has not been started as of yet, just because it was slated to start later this summer. So from my explanation, that's where I'm coming from, where there was an error strictly on my part when it came to filing the paperwork. It was brought to my attention, honestly, it's a little funny, but it was brought to my attention because the homeowner's father is actually doing a bathroom renovation on the second floor. And we happened to be discussing this project one day, and it was brought, it was asked of me by the owner's stepfather if a permit had been pulled for the bathroom, and I have nothing to do with the bathroom project. And he had asked me if it would be a problem when the building department came through, seeing that a bathroom project had been started and with no permit. And I said it would be an issue when the building department comes through, and I would recommend either I talk to the building department, because I have a good rapport with them, or you have to file a permit for the bathroom, because obviously, it's going to get flagged. The next day, the homeowner's father, who's handling the bathroom permit, went to the town of Wallingford, went to pull his permit and attach it to mine, in which time he called me to ask what the building permit number was. I went to my desk to pull out my paperwork, which I have my four filed permits for the other jobs, opened them up, and then literally hit me that I don't have a permit for that job. And it was just simply gross error on my point, on my part, to have not had the paperwork in order. I pull permits for absolutely every job, and I honestly beg of this board not to punish the homeowner, who's now been out of her house since early July. We stopped work on the property as soon as it was brought to our attention. Lou Paletti at the building department had me running, I think, into every office in this building, trying to find paperwork in order to help us move this forward to, you know, just to help. And obviously, there was nothing on paper, because this home was built, I believe, in the mid to late nineteen-forties, pre-building or pre-zoning. And obviously, it's a non-conforming structure. The dormer that we have already constructed, I believe it's about twelve to fifteen inches in from the eaves of the side of the building. We have not altered the ridge height of the overall structure. We did raise the front wall to approximately ninety-six inches. Otherwise, the sightlines of the structure don't change. We're not encroaching on any property lines, more so than what doesn't conform already. So I know it's kind of a mess, but that's what's happening with this property.
Amy, could you give us the, what you know of this, please?
I think Mr. Urbah pretty much gave you the right chronology. I mean, error, certainly some remorse. There's nothing we can do other than to, you know, come here before you, which is my suggestion that he do, and to sort of beg forgiveness more from the property owner than from this board. So it's there, but he's heated, he's related properly, from what I understand, and as well, he's also heated the halting to the work until a determination is made today.
So these pictures you gave us are, that's the, the outside's all finished?
Correct. It's framed sided with a roof on it. And that's, we literally had the stop-work order, or the town, I think, showed up two days after that. And then Lou showed up on-site. I immediately went to Town Hall, tried working it out, contacted the homeowner, contacted Paul, and contacted the zoning department. So, and had multiple panic attacks, you know, for obvious reasons. But it had, there's been a stop-work order since, you know, or whatever it was, early July, but we had stopped going to the property probably ten days prior.
Has anybody got any questions?
Yeah, I do. You started work without displaying a permit on the building. Am I right?
Correct, yes.
If you're a carpenter, you know better, right?
Correct, yes.
All right. So how come, I don't understand. There's no real excuse, in my opinion, being in the same trade.
Correct. I mean, yes, you typically try to display a permit in the window of the jobs.
You don't actually try, you have to.
Correct. You have to, but I think it's, you know, more often than not, I would say, it's an occurrence that, you know, not everybody displays that permit. With the town of Wallingford, honestly, they're great to work within. The permitting is, obviously, we get the, a pink copy of our permit a couple of days after filing, because they're so quick. Honestly, they were sitting in a pile on my desk. So it's, I, I work from sunup from sundown, and I do handle all the paperwork, all the business, and I'm on-site every day. Sometime, my day started at three-thirty today. I was on-site at five-fifty-five in West Hartford, and I'm sitting here now. So if, and I'm a single father of three. I literally do the best I can. I have a, I would say, a very busy business right now, but sometime, I've never had a mistake like this before. This, this, you know, fell through the cracks. I think I have seven permits in the town, you know, this year, and I honestly try not coming down this way, because I live forty-five minutes away now. But I grew up in this town, so I still get phone calls to work down this way. And I try to, you know, heed those phone calls.
Thanks. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Stephanie Greenwood, twenty-nine Pleasant Street. I am the homeowner. Frank is a very reputable contractor. And, you know, I see that, you know, mistakes happen, things happen. But, you know, I really just, speaking from, you know, having my husband and my three kids at this house, you know, trying to, you know, get this, you know, bedroom set for my son, I just really hope that you take it into consideration that mistakes do happen. But at the end of the day, it's, it's the homeowner that's really being affected, and I'm really just hoping that, you know, you guys take that into consideration.
Thank you. Does anybody else here speak in favor of this application? Anybody else, anybody speak against this application? Hearing and seeing none, do you have anything further you'd like to add? I'm going to close the public hearing and open it up for discussion and possible action by the board.
It is unfortunate that you made a mistake, and I hate to see the homeowner suffer for your error.
Yeah.
I'm sure you won't do that again.
Yeah.
And I got to say that I probably would have voted no to start off with, but we will see how it goes. Anybody else got a comment? No? Okay.
Make a motion.
Hold on one second, Ray. What's that? On the what? No, that's not what those, we're just on the, just on his variance. Go ahead.
Make a motion of variance request for front yard of thirty-two feet to construct a vertical addition at twenty-nine Pleasant Street, as shown on proposed plot plan, land of Stephanie M. Levatino, twenty-nine Pleasant Street, dated August ninth, two thousand twenty-two, and submitted plans, photos received, eight-twelve-twenty-two. So moved.
Dueling seconds. Motion to approve, Mr. Conroy.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Wolfher.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Rice.
Yes to approve.
Ms. Harris.
Yes to approve.
And Chairman Russick.
Yes.
I can't thank you enough. I really do.
Make a motion for variance request for side yard of fourteen-point-twenty-one feet to construct a vertical addition at twenty-nine Pleasant Street, as shown on proposed plot plan, land of Stephanie M. Levatino, twenty-nine Pleasant Street, dated August ninth, two thousand twenty-two, and submitted plans and photos received, eight-twelve of twenty-two. So moved.
Second.
This is a variance approval for the side yard. Mr. Conroy.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Wolfher.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Rice.
Yes to approve.
Ms. Harris.
Yes to approve.
And Chairman Russick.
Yes to approve. Your application's been approved.
Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Next up is.
Ninety-one Thorpe Avenue.
Twenty-two-dash-zero-three-six, variance request for Ranciato for ninety-one Thorpe Avenue. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, we have staff comments, Mr. Chairman. Applicant requests front yards of forty-two-point-five-four feet and forty-seven-point-oh-nine feet, where a hundred feet is required to construct two-story additions to a residence at ninety-one Thorpe Avenue in a W-1 district. Parcel is a corner lot with an existing residential use in a watershed interchange district. The watershed interchange district was recently modified in April of two thousand twenty-two, designed to best protect the town's public drinking water supply resources while allowing low-intensity uses and emerging technological development. Existing residential uses are considered conforming and preserved, yet the bulk standards are designed primarily for other than existing residential uses, and as such, the setbacks are far greater than in current residential zones. Despite the limitations in two front yards of a corner lot, this parcel would be compliant in a comparable residential zone requiring forty-foot setbacks, yet the entire existing dwelling is located in the required one-hundred-foot front yards of the W-I district. As such, no modifications could be made without requesting variance approval. And that is it for correspondence.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Paul Buckley Reynolds from Stonewall Boundaries Land Surveying with the business address of eight-O Sage Drive in Wallingford.
Peter Ranciato. I am the contractor on the job. I'm at one-oh-nine Mono East Trail in Wallingford.
I'm Stephanie Peterson. I'm one of the homeowners, and I live at ninety-one Thorpe Avenue in Wallingford.
Thank you. Please explain your application.
Okay. Well, this site had a fire, which, which occurred in January, January twenty-twenty-one.
Want to pull the microphone close to you so we?
Twenty-two, sorry.
Twenty-twenty. Just in January. So in, in looking over what they wanted to, how they wanted to rebuild, they decided they wanted to invest in the property and build a second-floor addition and a new front addition to make better use of, of the property. When they went to build a, when they went to pull a permit, they found out they were in this W-I zone with the hundred-foot setback from each street. And as you just read in the, the letter from Amy, the hundred-foot setback from Thorpe and from Slater would not even let you have any portion of the existing house be in compliance at all. So we are asking for this variance because, because of the zone that it currently is in, which is not a zone which will allow this residence any benefit.
So just to probably clear it up, the existing house is still on the existing footprint, correct?
Yes.
The, the new part is the proposed addition on the southern end, right?
Yes, the sixteen by twenty-four-point-four.
And what really messed you up was them changing the zone up there?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
I got the look. Go ahead, Amy.
Point of order. The zone was not changed. Actually, it was more favorable, and it was my error originally on the legal notice, as I've advised Mr. Ranciato of this. Residential uses were non-conforming. Existing residentials in this newly-defined W-I zone are permitted. The problem being the bulk standards, the setbacks, the building coverage aren't residentially geared, if you will. So the zone itself did not change, their designation did not change. Some of the definitions of the particulars in the watershed did. So, so I, I owe them some money back, that they didn't need one of the variance requests. So it actually was more favorable for a non-conforming use. But yet, the bulk standards didn't catch up.
So a new name, same zoning. Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Hearing and seeing nobody pick up their, wave their hand. Is anybody here to speak in favor of the application? Anybody here to speak against the application? So, Amy, just to clarify, we still have two variance requests for this, correct?
The, oh, hang on, give me a half a second. You still have a, yeah, two front yard setbacks not, still remain, no use.
This is correct.
This is correct, because they need, because of that zone, there's a hundred-foot requirement, which is, none of our residential zones require that.
Right. No, I under, we all, I think we all understood that part. I'm just, I'm just.
Just two. And, and any additional where my error was not necessary, because I, I hadn't familiarized myself with the changes that occurred in April of twenty-two to that zone, one of them being this.
Okay. Do you have any further you'd like to add?
No.
Going to close the public hearing and open up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Make a motion. Make a motion for variance request for front yard of forty-two-point-five-four feet, Thorpe Avenue, where a hundred feet required to construct a two-story addition at ninety-one Thorpe Avenue, as shows on the proposed plot plan, land of Randy K. and Stephanie Marie Peterson, ninety-one Thorpe Avenue, dated eleven, two thousand twenty-two. So moved.
Second.
Since her front yard setback on Thorpe. Mr. Conroy.
No to approve.
Mr. Wolfher.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Rice.
Yes to approve.
Ms. Harris.
Yes to approve.
And Chairman Russick.
Yes.
Make a motion for variance request for front yard of forty-seven-point-nine feet, Slater Lane, where a hundred feet required to construct a two-story addition at ninety-one Thorpe Avenue, as shown on proposed plot plan of Randy K. and Stephanie Marie Peterson, ninety-one Thorpe Avenue, dated August eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve a front yard on Slater. Mr. Conroy.
No to approve.
Mr. Wolfher.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Rice.
Yes to approve.
Ms. Harris.
Yes to approve.
And Chairman Russick.
Yes. Your application's been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Why did you say?
We don't, we don't, okay. Didn't know, no, that's, nope. You're approved. Have a good night.
Thank you. Yeah, we were pretty stunned when I went down and saw the hundred-foot, when everything else is forty. So it was a big headache, but I'm glad we figured it out.
Good night. Thank you. Next up is twenty-two-dash-zero-three-seven, variance request for Martindale, thirty-six Forest Road. Oh, you were doing that one?
It's like Dennis Ping Pong.
That's all we needed.
Do we have anyone?
Is there anybody there representing Martindale?
Yeah, he's.
Oh, he is.
Oh.
Okay.
Hi, good evening again.
No, wait, hold on. Didn't, I didn't know if there was anybody here. Twenty-two-dash-zero-three-seven, variance request for Martindale, thirty-six Forest Road. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have staff notes. Applicant seeks front yard of thirty-nine-point-two-six feet, where forty feet is required, and side yard of twelve-point-five-two feet, where twenty feet is required, to construct a twelve-foot by twenty-four-foot attached carport at thirty-six Forest Road in an R-18 district. Parcel is an undersized lot, undersized lot for the zone with no existing garage area. Should the applicant either locate the carport nine inches to the rear or reduce the depth by nine, by nine inches from the front, the east side of the front yard, the variance can be eliminated, and as such, this office cannot support the granting of the front yard can be eliminated, and as such, this office cannot support the granting of the front yard setback request. Let me see if there's anything else, Mr. Chairman. Nope, that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi.
State your name and address.
My name is Paul Buckley Reynolds from Stonewall Boundaries with a business address of eight O Sage Drive, and I'm here to represent the Martindales, who've owned this property since nineteen seventy-one, and they never had any place where they could store their cars. So, after all these years and after the price of the vehicles have gone up and after they've had some damages from the hillside, which is the main portion of their property behind the house, it's a hill going up to Masonic. If you look on the drawing, you'll see there's a, there's some brick steps with a, with a drain and a concrete pad. Pretty much that line going across the property and to the rear is a hillside, and they've been getting a lot of damage to their vehicles from trees falling down the hillside and hitting their car. So, they've decided they wanted to put up a little protective carport encompassing the majority of the space of the existing paved driveway. The reason that they are asking for the front yard variance is they're trying to match the roof line in with the existing house, and to do so, they would have to keep it in line with the existing range of that house, and that's why they need that nine-inch variance for the front yard. Currently, their, the front of their house is twenty-four point nine-seven feet from the, from the front of the, the front street line, so they're not coming any closer than the twenty-four ninety-seven, but so be it.
Thank you. In review, most carports in this neighborhood are setback. Most carports in this neighborhood are setback.
Are setback.
Yeah.
And garages.
And garages.
Yes, but in this, in this case, we have the, we have the hillside that they'd have to push back. So, if you look, you got that hill pretty much, which begins right at the back of their house. They got a patio right there, they have a drainage, and then they have that hillside. So, they're trying to keep it right where it is in line with the...
Is the entrance way you're going to stay there?
Yes. So, they're pretty much just putting a cover over their existing driveway.
Anybody have any questions? Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against it? Hearing, seeing none, Tom, do you have anything you want to add? Anything further you'd like to add?
No, I think, I think we're all set with that.
I'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Make a motion, variance request for front yard of thirty-nine point twenty-six feet where forty feet is required to construct an attached carport as shown on proposed plot plan. Land of Edward J. and Mary Ann Martindale, thirty-six Forest Road dated August eighth, and submitted plans received eight, twelve, twenty-two. So moved.
Second.
This is a front yard variance request for approval. Mr. Conroy.
No to approve.
Mr. Wolfher.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Rice.
No.
Ms. Harris.
No to approve.
And Chairman Russick.
No.
Make a motion, variance request for side yard of twelve point five-two feet where twenty feet is required to construct an attached carport as shown on proposed plot plan of Edward J. and Mary Ann Martindale, thirty-six Forest Road dated August eights. So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve the side yard. Mr. Conroy.
No to approve.
Mr. Wolfher.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Rice.
No.
Ms. Harris.
Yes to approve.
And Chairman Russick.
Yes, both motions failed.
Thank you. Next up is twenty-two dash zero-three-eight, special exception request for Pasquini. I apologize if I got that wrong. I did? All right. And Gideon?
Gideon.
Gideon? Thirty-two Mohegan Lane. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have staff comments, which I'll read. Applicant seeks special exception approval for one thousand one hundred and four square foot feet of garage area to erect a seven hundred and twenty square feet detached garage at thirty-two Mohegan Lane in an R-eighteen district. In early August twenty twenty-two, applicant applied for building permit to erect a seven hundred and twenty square foot detached garage. As a result of reviewing plans for planning and zoning sign-off, it was discovered that total garage area exceeded the maximum permitted by at least one hundred and sixty-eight square feet. Applicant was advised on August third, twenty twenty-two, that either a special exception request would be required to allow all the garage area or removal of existing garage area, conversion to living space of attached garage, and no special exception request would be required. Applicant opted to proceed by removing existing garage, and a conditional zoning permit was issued as sign-off to the Building Department to allow construction on two conditions. Conversion of existing garage to living space, complete by November four, twenty twenty-two, and immediate removal of carport structure in the front setback prior to commencing construction of new detached garage. Construction commenced, no removal of carport, and applicant decided to pursue ZBA special exception approval with August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two application to keep the existing garage rather than converting. Site visit on September eighth, twenty twenty-two with the chief building official to inspect construction progress and confirm removal, removal of carport. Carport remains, as does similar temporary structure in rear yard, confirmed for more than six years, and the shed remains, which was represented on survey, to be removed. Variance approval not sought for exceeding, exceeding building coverage maximum would be required to keep any of the accessory structures. Property is in violation for the carport in the front setback remaining and confirmed on September eighth, twenty twenty-two, while construction moves forward. Violation notice sent to applicant for same. Detached garage is located in a compliant location and within height regulations. The board should consider the representations of the applicant in all current conditions for building permit not being met as impacting rendering and approval with any or more conditions. Let me see if we have anything else. See, I have a conditional zoning permit from the town of Wallingford to Ronald Gideon dated August third. I have a notice of violation from the town of Wallingford to Ronald Gideon dated September eighth. Let me see if I have anything else. I also have an email from Maria Papa dated September eighteenth. I have a letter from Maria Papa dated September eighteenth, addressed to Amy Torre, and that appears to be all. I don't think I've missed anything, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record. Bring the microphones up close to you so we can hear you.
Karen Pasquini, thirty-two Mohegan Lane.
Pull it a little closer, please.
Karen Pasquini, thirty-two Mohegan Lane.
Perfect, thank you.
Ronald Gideon, thirty-two Mohegan Lane.
Explain your application, what's going on.
So, our request is actually to keep our attached garage as a garage.
And not, not to convert it, because we need that little bit of extra square footage.
And garage space. The builder that we have building the garage convinced us it was the right thing to do to convert it to living space, it would increase the value of our home, but after they did the pad for the new garage, we knew it wasn't going to be enough.
Okay.
As far as...
No, go ahead.
As far as the carport and everything, the carport is down, and we've...
The other structure behind the house is down.
Yes, that's...
And the shed was our plan to take down the shed after the garage was built. Even with the shed on our property, I see that our coverage would be like fourteen point nine percent, and we have, we're allowed fifteen percent coverage. So, the shed that's currently on our property shouldn't be an issue until we take it down.
Okay. Amy, could you give us a clarification of where the town is at right now?
I certainly will, and because it was post comments that were mailed to both applicant and the board, it was confirmed the carport came down at the end of last week, and at some point over this weekend, the, their, their extra structure was removed. We had discussion with Ms. Pasquini regarding the shed and keeping the shed, and so that would not put them over building coverage, but I would suggest to the board, so they are not in violation at the moment. This was kind of a roundabout way to get here. But the board should maintain any conditions of approval that were existing on the motions minus the shed, should you entertain any approval, to prevent them from returning.
I lost my paper, hold on. Yeah, yeah, well, because number two in your suggestions is okay, we removed that, correct?
They, they may keep the shed, they are not in violation for building, excess building coverage today.
Yep.
Having said that, we don't plan on keeping the shed.
Okay, so...
But you don't, they're not mandated to remove the shed, should they choose to keep it. The other structures have to go, and the condition was that they were removed prior to constructing the garage, which is sort of a little backwards.
We did the best we could.
Yes, so they're all gone now?
Yes, I have, I have confirmed that today.
Not to return?
No.
Okay, and then the shed, you're saying the shed is gonna...
That was our original plan, but, I mean...
We're not exceeding the...
Coverage, so we want to take our time.
Right.
We don't want to rush.
By November fourth, right. We're going to take it down this year, probably not.
So, and, and back to the application, so you, you built a two-car garage?
Yes, sir, detached.
And you have a carport or one-car garage attached? What is it?
One car.
Yes, yeah, attached to the house, yes.
Okay, and so you want to keep, keep them both?
Yes.
Yes, yes. The square footage is what...
We're one hundred and sixty-eight square feet over with both.
Over with the, with the two of them?
Which is small compared to what others...
And as far as the proposed new garage in the back?
Yes.
What's that used for?
It's going to be a workshop, you know, my personal utilities...
Lawnmower, tractor.
Motorcycle.
No commercial use?
Oh, absolutely not, no.
Okay.
We just, we're outdoorsy people, we get a lot of stuff.
A lot of gardening and...
And then the, the garage that's attached to the house can be used for your cars or whatever?
My car.
Very good. Anybody got any questions for the applicant? Amy, you have anything further you'd like to add?
Just a, just a point if I may, Mr. Chairman, to, the, the sort of misnomer in not just this particular case, but sort of just to highlight it, is that the temporary or wallless structures are not counted, they're buildings, so we need to locate them in the same manner as a permanent structure.
And in other words, a hoop house is, is what some people call them.
Correct. You have structures, they, it doesn't matter what they're constructed of, so just point of clarif, people think it's temporary, but when they've sat there for six and eight years, that tells you too, but I mean, they're, they're, they're no different from a zoning perspective.
That contractors don't realize it either, because, you know, we've asked the contractors, and they said, no, it's no problem.
Just a point for future reference that you, so we have to locate them in the same manner, therefore, by the carport, for example, in the driveway was in your front yard, it was like you put a building there.
I understand that, no.
Right, because we're misunderstood from the contractors.
Just a point to clarify, so...
Yes, I appreciate it.
So...
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against it? Hearing, seeing none, do you have anything further you'd like to add?
No.
Going to close the public hearing and open up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Make a motion, special exception request for total garage area one thousand one hundred and four square feet to construct seven hundred and twenty square feet. Detached garage as shown on plot plan, property survey, land now of, or formerly Robin W. Gideon and Karen N. Pasquenini, thirty-two Mohegan Lane dated July twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, subject to remediation of all open zoning violations, removal of carport structure in front setback, removal of temporary canvas storage building from rear yard, garage height not to exceed fifteen feet, second driveway and related curb cut to be permitted by town engineer or removed. So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Conroy.
No to approve.
Mr. Wolfher.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Rice.
Yes to approve.
Ms. Harris.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Chairman Russick.
Yes to approve. Your application's been approved.
Thank you.
Thanks for sticking around. Have a good night. All right, can I get a motion to, well, hold on, Tom, is there any corrections in the minutes?
No, there isn't, Mr. Chairman, thank you for asking.
I got a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So now, we have an open position, Secretary, and I'm going to nominate and make a motion to nominate Karen Harris as our secretary of the ZBA. Karen's been a very good member of the ZBA since coming on as an alternate. Lot of good questions, interacts very well, and I'm happy to see her as a full-time member.
I second that, Mr. Chairman, and everything else you've said about her, because I think it's fantastic.
Let me do this one. Everybody in favor of appointing Ms. Harris as our official secretary of the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Absolutely.
Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome, Karen, thank you.
Congratulations.
You're going to make me blush.
There you go.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it. Hallelujah.